Get started. We'll get started now. As a preliminary matter, this is a public meeting of the zoning board of appeals and I am Howard Trace to the chairman. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. ZBA members Eric Svan.
Here.
Mario Karen of LA.
Here.
Planning Board liaison Larry Murphy.
Here.
Town staff Kathy Brown.
I'm here.
Town council is Lisa here tonight?
No, she's not. I did send her an agenda.
Yeah, okay. And anticipated speakers Attorney Douglas Deshane's.
And Mr. Kaplan.
And Barry Kaplan. I know Mr. Deshane is here. Okay, good evening. Today is Thursday, May 20th, 2021. It is 7:30 PM and this is an open meeting of the zoning board of appeals which is being governed, being conducted remotely consistent with the governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends a requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the ZBA is convened by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom as posted on the agenda of the zoning board of appeals section of the town's website identifying how the public may join. You may participate by going to HTTPS slash US zero two web zoom USJ eight eight six nine six seven six zero three one eight and enter meeting ID eight eight six nine six seven six zero three one eight and passcode four seven six nine one zero or by calling nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine entering meeting ID eight eight six nine six seven six zero three one eight and if prompted enter passcode four seven six nine one zero. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendees, all attendees are participating by video or telephone conference. Application information has been provided to the ZBA members and materials will be presented during the meeting. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Howard Trace, the chairman, will introduce each item on the agenda. As in a, as a participant, we ask that you keep the following in mind. Please mute when you are not speaking for a telephone star six to toggle mute or unmute or a computer click on off mute button. Please use earbuds, earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that as a video, as video participants, you are attendees in a meeting. Participants can see you and care should be taken to eliminate interruptions while you are participating on your computer. Anything that you broadcast on your video will be captured by the recording. I will yield the floor to the applicant and/or their representative and will invite them to present their application or further information that was requested. If the applicant and/or their representative wish to share their screen, please request through the chairman so that you can be given permission to do so. The chairman will afford ZBA members the opportunity to speak and ask questions at any time. Public comment, the chairman will afford participants the opportunity to speak and ask questions as follows. I will seek questions through the raise hand function. For video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the participants option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. Cover your cursor in this area if you don't see it. Window will open and display on right on the bottom of this participant area. You will see the list of phone video participants on the bottom and you will see the ability to click on a button to raise hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. List your name, address, and then your question. Telephone participants can use their phones, iPad while in a Zoom meeting to raise hand by hitting star and I. I will seek to call upon questions from the public that have hit the raised hand button in the order of which they are listed. Please identify your name and address and then your question or comment. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. We will continue down the list of those in the raised hand column. Should you, should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns that were received, they will be read for the record at this time. Additional agenda items will be called upon and handled in the same manner. Eric, can you read the first hearing on the agenda, please?
Yes, sir. Public hearings. Number one. Mary Beth and Larry Abbott, 69 Southern Boulevard applicants are seeking a special permit slash finding to allow for the construction of a new single family home, the height of which is 25 feet constitutes an increase over the existing structure nine feet on the lot.
Okay, is the applicant with us?
They are, but their video is off.
Yes, Mr. Chairman Douglas Deshane. Here on behalf of Mary Beth and Larry Abbott.
Good evening.
Good evening. Also with me this evening, Adam True. Adam is the designer of the proposed home as well as the builder. And I was wondering if we could potentially allow Mr. True to speak. Should we have any questions for him?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. As was stated, I am here representing the Abbott's with respect to their property at 69 Southern Boulevard. Our site plan is shown on the screen in front of you. Thank you, Mario. The Abbott's would like to raise the existing single family home on the lot and reconstruct a new three bedroom home in its place. As you can see from the plan, the existing home is non-conforming as to both the front yard and the side yard. And in fact, the side yard is well over the property line to the west. So significantly non-conforming structure in that regard. Additionally, we do have an undersized lot. However, I do believe we meet the frontage requirement. The new home is proposed and, and we can run through the architecturals in just a sec. But the new home that is proposed will in fact be compliant with all setback requirements. It will be compliant with respect to lot coverage, FAR and building height limitations. And as was stated, the single reason that we are here before this evening is because as we all know, your bylaw requires a finding in the event that you are increasing the height of the new structure over that of the existing structure, which we are. Although I do want to point out again that our height does in fact is well below the height limitations for the area. So Mario, if you could please just flip through the architecturals.
This, this site plan is for 71 though that we're looking at.
Mario.
Sixty-nine, I have it at sixty-nine. Building site.
Yeah, I think there was a little, might have been a little confusion with the number of versions of it, but this, this is definitely.
All right, let me try the next one. Opening. We're opening.
I have it up. Mario, if you'd like me to share my.
Yeah, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Let me give you, let me give you share. You are co-hosted, Eric.
Let's just say preview on why I want it.
Counter. There you go.
So this is page two. And here's page, let me try this version. I got another version here. Is this it? Is it?
Yep.
Yes, it is. And actually, nothing I said was inconsistent except that I want to point out that the pre-existing hall of the existing home on the site as shown at the front of the plan is, as I said, non-conforming not only to the side yard setback which it touches, but this is the one that in fact intrudes beyond the front yard lot line such that a portion of the existing home is actually within the right of way. So a marked improvement with respect to those non-conformities in that this new structure will in fact meet all of the setback requirements, lot coverage, FAR and building height. And again, because we are increasing the height of the building over the original building and I'll give you those numbers exactly. We are currently going from just around under 10 feet to 25 feet, which is still 10 feet below the height limitation for the district. So again, significant improvement with respect to a lot, or excuse me, structural non-conformities. It is our position. Oh, I'm sorry. What if we could, I'd be happy to run through the architectural drawings if the board would like just to.
Yeah, we would.
All right, thank you.
Share a screen.
I can share the screen right here.
Hold on.
Adam True.
I've just given you, I've just given you co-host so you can share.
All right.
Thank you, Adam.
Hold on, I get the wrong one here.
That's contagious. The one below it, Adam? That one?
Five, six. Let's try this.
Okay.
No. Sorry, believe it or not, not actually on my computer, my project manager. Let's see here, maybe this one has it.
That's a little bit.
Hmm. Did he go back? My gosh, sorry. I was prepared on the other one and not this one. Sixty-nine. That's embarrassing. If you want, if you want, I can try putting, pulling it up. I think I have all those files.
You, you definitely should have those files.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to close out, Adam. All right, let me close out. Don't have it. Yeah, okay. You gotta be kidding me. So it should be architectural plans. One, five, three. Is that it?
Yep, that should be.
Nope.
If it pops up.
All right, I have it as well.
Okay, if you have it, go ahead.
Why do I have to open system preference to grant access?
That's weird.
Share screen. It's not giving me a preview. But I haven't had this happen before.
That's what everybody says.
Eric, let me try. I have the files. Are these the ones, Adam?
I think it's again, no, yeah, that could be it. Yep. Yeah, that is it.
Okay, just tell me when to move.
Is it this one? Okay, hold on here.
Those are your elevations.
Am I sharing my screen or you?
I'm sharing it right now.
Okay.
Just tell me how you want me to move it.
I can't actually see your screen share.
I can't see it either.
All right, hold on.
I'm sorry for this, guys.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, can you see it now? Can you see it now?
There you go. Oh, that's, that's why I don't have it on here. Okay, yeah.
Oh, there you go. Adam, do you want to run through these or would you like me to?
Sure. Yeah, so they're basically we, Lane Jones was the original designer on the, on the project. He's since has, has been released from the project and he's released all his drawings. So we're using these drawings in conjunction with our drawings. And on this one where the elevations were already done, we didn't want to do them twice. So we're just looking at the, the house right now and the far and coverage requirements, I believe, are in a different file or if we can go up and down, maybe we can see.
That's too far.
Yep. And since it was only one floor, it made it relatively easy. You know, the covered porches and the, any awnings and protrusions over 20 inches are in the shaded area. There may be one that's all shaded blue as well, but.
So if you could go back, we'll just, Adam, we're just going to give them a quick overview. As, as was stated, it is a single story structure. As you can see from the drawings, it's a cottage style, architecturally styled as a cottage type of structure. And the floor plan is here. As you can see, three bedrooms, living room, dining room, bathrooms, pretty straightforward, a single four, single floor structure. And then of course, the architectural styling, as I said, was a cottage style. Adam, is there anything more you really want to express?
I mean, I guess we, I guess we could field any questions. You know, we, we covered the, the floor area ratio. Get that calculation down to a science by the time we're done. So we get that and it's all measured out so that if it needs to be checked and double checked, it can be gave dimensions in every direction. But other than that, yeah, any other questions? The structure is not very high up. It's not low to the ground, but it's like three feet up the lowest point. That would be on Tim's submission. Exactly what the height was, but two foot six.
Says two six.
Yeah.
So I, again, we, Adam and I are available to answer any questions you might have this. Unlike some other projects we've done, I mean, this one seemed pretty straightforward and that the only reason for seeking permits was the increase in height. It was designed to meet all other requirements.
Okay, Eric, do you have any questions about the plans?
Um. Yes, Mr. Chairman, let's see. So on the site plan, you have an outdoor shower and you show two gas tanks. And those are not shown in the elevations. So I assume the outside shower is at grade because there's a clamshell path that goes to it.
And the, yeah, that's correct. Yep.
Okay, and then the gas tanks are either raised or are they at grade screened in?
I believe at grade.
Okay. They were covered or they were raised, they would be part of the lot coverage. Item two, the application and the site plan have different lot coverages and FAR. They're not that far off, but the plan has nineteen point three percent for coverage and the application says nineteen point nine and the FAR on the plan says eighteen point nine and the application says nineteen point four.
So we do have a revision to the application that was sent out. It has our rev one on it that corrects those, I believe.
And when was that sent out?
There it is, right there. Should have been sent out on the 12th.
So on the 12th, it says nineteen point nine for lot coverage, correct? And nineteen point four for FAR?
Yes.
And
Yes.
I don't, I mean, I don't, I just don't have the file that, I don't have the site plan that has the matching numbers. That's all I'm saying.
And Well, but we're definitely going to have to get that to you, of course, but if that's the case, make sure it's correct and accurate.
And then the there is no height dimension on the elevations showing the height to the midpoint of the roof of the cupola. But if I measured it, I came up with 25, which I believe is what was stated. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So there should be a dimension on the drawings that clearly shows the height to the average grade to the mean height of the highest roof.
We can get that together, yeah.
And then I don't think there were any existing condition plans of the house to be raised that were a part of the application.
All right.
So the lot. What were the calculations that need to be changed? The percentages here?
The site plan and the application need to match or should match. Right, we don't, there's they're close, but they don't match. And you know, nineteen point nine is getting close to twenty, nineteen point three nine is below twenty and the FAR is still below twenty-five.
Well, let's hope we did better on the next one. This is pretty embarrassing.
So that's, that's.
And there, as Eric mentioned, there's no existing plan or no plan for the existing house now.
I believe only, only a footprint. It was Tim Mead, I believe, was able to get the footprint here.
Where, where, where?
And position it right on the plot plan.
Right, and when we're proposing to totally raise the, the existing structure, the board, would the board still like to see an an elevation plan drawn of the structure to be?
Just a one story, you know.
Understood. I'm just trying to check the bedroom count from one to two to two to three and that's all I was trying to confirm.
It's a, you know, carded as a two bedroom. And then it's going to go to three. Yeah, so one, one extra bedroom, yeah.
Right, so I'm just looking to, for some documentation in order to confirm that.
I, if you want, like.
This one, I believe, I submitted a copy of the assessor's card which identified the two bedrooms. That's usually the way I verify bedroom count.
No, that's not it.
No, it's by what's there, so. Would you like us to just, I mean, we've, we've clearly got a couple of issues here, so we, we're going to have to come back to another meeting and, and.
I will, I will give you the.
Get the information you need. We can do an interior floor plan if that helps. Elevations probably aren't necessary because of the height of it.
Right, Adam, I don't think.
A floor plan would be sufficient, Eric.
Right, so the assessor's card says two bedrooms. I'd be willing to, to say that it's documented as two bedrooms on the assessor's card.
Okay, well, I think it, no, I think it makes sense. I mean, both structures should be documented how they are, I guess. Or, you know, I don't know what you call a bedroom and how that, that, you know, is, is in shape, but if there is two bedrooms in there. So if there's any, you know, discrepancy, then we want to make sure it was right.
Hey.
But if we can go by the assessor's card, that's, that's fine, too.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, Mario, you have anything else?
No, I think Eric covered most of the concerns.
Yeah, Eric covered the couple that I had, so. So I think we need to just get the application straight out so that the numbers match from the site plan to the application and we need elevation.
Mr. Tim, if I could just check on one thing. I, I, it was my understanding that in fact, we did, I did send in the amended chart of the dimensional regulations so that it would in fact so that they were in fact consistent. Is that, I just want to verify that that's not the case. Because I know Eric was reviewing the original application versus the site plan and that we did, you know, we were made aware of that discrepancy and that's why I submitted the revised plan, but, I mean, excuse me, revised chart. But if, if we're still inconsistent, by all means, we will certainly provide a revised site plan. But I just wanted to check to make sure that our site plan does not, is not currently consistent with the revised coverage numbers, so. We show a proposed coverage in the app, in the revised application of nineteen point nine. And I see in that nineteen point three, nineteen point nine two. All right. I guess we will have to make sure that those are consistent.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to just continue, continue to the next meeting and?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure, it is, Eric.
I would, if we're in discussion here, I think maybe we could offer a motion with conditions of correction and confirmation. Or if you'd like to wait, just, I mean, it might take the same amount of time anyway, but.
Well, these conditions are actually pretty small and just you know, small adjustments, so I think if we all decide that we want to move forward with this plan, conditions would be fine with me.
If, if, if we were all meeting face to face across a table, we would have typically marked up the application to correct the understanding and have had a chance to, to share documents across the table which has been our standard operating procedure, which is why I'm offering to, to make a conditional motion if that.
Okay. That's fine with me. If you want to make a conditional motion, go right ahead.
So I'll make a motion to grant. Uh, so I'll make a motion to grant a special permit binding. As the presented project for new constructions will not be more detrimental to the existing neighborhood and is in harmony and keeping with the impending. Properties, um. For meeting the P I O D. FAR lot coverage, yard setbacks, height, number of bedrooms. Um, with the following conditions that the application and site plan are corrected to match each other. And that, uh, an existing floor plan be drawn to prove out that there are two bedrooms. In the existing structure, so that three may be allowed in the new.
Uh, we need elevation also, or.
In an elevation, please.
Have a second?
A second that.
Okay, all in favor, Eric?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passed.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Board, we appreciate that and do apologize for any inconsistencies.
I, I can actually screen share for the next one, the proper documents.
Yay. I'm free. Okay, you're, you're all set with your permissions. Go ahead, Adam.
Yep, hang on a second. Okay. Public hearings number. Two, Mary Beth and Larry Abbott, seventy one Southern Boulevard. The applicants are seeking a special permit slash finding to allow for the construction of a new single family home. The height of which is thirty four feet constitutes an increase over the existing structure of eleven point five on the lot.
Okay, uh, Mr. DeShane.
Mister Chairman, Members Board, good evening, Douglas DeShane, representing Mary Beth and Larry Abbott. Again, with me this evening, Adam True, um, the designer and, um. Builder of the, of the proposed home. Um, we have a very, um, similar situation on this site. In that we have an existing non-conforming, uh, uh, structure. Uh, as, as I had pointed out before, um, on the site plan for this, for seventy one. Uh, the existing structure is non-conforming as to, uh, both front and side yard setback. Uh, it is actually, uh, over the lot line. In, 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 um. With respect to the side lot line as well as the, um. Front lot line, so we again have a portion of the structure, I believe, within the right of way, so, um. It is important that that be rectified. Uh, again, the new home, uh, will, is, has been designed to meet all applicable setbacks, height limitations, lot coverage. And FAR requirements, and it is my understanding that we are here. For a special permit finding because of the increase in the height. From the existing height, as was mentioned, I believe it's eleven, somewhere around eleven or twelve feet. Uh, and we are going up to, uh, thirty four feet, which is just below, uh, the height limitation, uh, in this zone. Um, in light of the numerous and non-conformities of the structure and its, uh. Age and deteriorated, um. Uh, condition, uh, and the fact that it's in the, uh, over the lot lines. Um, we do believe that a reconstruction of this home is in the best interest of the. Our neighborhood and would make for a dramatic improvement, uh, to the neighborhood and given the fact that the, the, the. Building will meet, um, the setback requirements and height requirements. Um, we believe it will be less impactful on the neighbors and therefore beneficial. Um, again, um, if, uh, Adam, if you could put up the site plan, I just want to verify what I just said.
You also sent in a corrected page, uh, one, uh, for that one as well.
Right, I was on, uh, the twelfth, I think.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I can tell you that, um, I, you know, since filing these and my earlier applications with the board, I have, uh. Tried to make sure that we double check all of our FAR and, and lot coverage calculations and in doing so. Uh, when we did, uh. Identify a discrepancy, I, I, you know, have immediately. Uh, followed it in a revised plan in accordance with. With my architecture, uh, direction, so, um. I, I, we are continuing to make sure that things are accurate and, uh, correct for the board's review, and I do apologize if. If, uh, there has been any inconsistencies. Again, as, as you can see from the site plan, this, uh, existing structure, which is a one-story, uh, smaller cottage. Uh, is well over the side lot line and infringing on, um. Uh, the neighbor's property. Um, and again, it, uh, while this one does not actually sit in the right of way, it is too close to the street. As you can see, we've proposed to put the, uh, new lot in, uh, excuse me, the new house in the center of the lot. Um, and this lot is, uh, of significant size, as you can see, it's, uh, uh, over fourteen thousand square feet in size. And does actually, I believe, uh, understand meets the, uh, uh, frontage requirement, so it's, uh. It's, uh, a, a, a very large lot for the area and is, uh, not as conforming as most, so, uh, it did make it. It did make it possible to, uh, center the home and, and far exceed all of the setbacks and, uh. And therefore allowed us to build a slightly larger structure without being, uh, overbearing. Or intruding on, uh, you know, the density of the area, so. Um, Adam, I, could we run through the architectures on this one? And I, I believe we do not have a.
Yeah, I can run through them, we just, uh.
Okay, but I, if I'm correct, Adam, we don't have an elevation for the existing. Uh, structure again, and I do apologize, uh, given the fact that we were, um. You know, planning to raise those structures, I, I've just relied on providing, uh, assessors' maps, excuse me, assessor cards. And maps to show the, uh, existing structures, but, uh. We, we can provide, uh, uh, a floor plan and elevation of that one as well. So Adam, I think we just want to get to the elevation drawings, um.
Sure.
And then we could walk through the, uh, FAR calculation drawings as well, so. There you go, I'd start there.
Yep, this is kind of just a perspective image of it. But, uh, we got elevations from. From all four sides. And, uh, this one is, you know, unlike the other one next door, where we're going to twenty five feet, this one's. Not just going to thirty four feet, it's going almost all the way to thirty five. So we had to do a lot to make sure it was. Correct, but in the FAR calculations here, we also. Highlighted the areas in blue that would count to try to make it more clear, um. I think not only to help the board, but to help ourselves, because. It's pretty particular and the first time you do it, I think you have to really focus on everything it says, so. We made sure to shade the overhangs and the roof areas that were further than twenty inches away from the home. And we, uh, included the area of the spirals by. calculation of the radius of the circle. And then we left out the unshaded areas to show on each floor. How we moved up through the structure, um, you know, counting here. And then on this floor, counting everything here except for the area that we already counted once. And then up on the second floor, again, the same. And then it goes through to where the roof deck access is. On the third floor, which the elevator only goes to. The first two floors of the home, and that's, there's an elevator shaft proposed at the bottom here. And from an elevationary standpoint, here we have. A, see if I can zoom in a little bit for us. So everything I do on the screen is directly showing, right? Very cool. Um, so. The average height, we're gonna have to zoom way in, uh, it's a big number. Is literally thirty four foot, eleven. And thirty one, thirty seconds, I'm not sure why you got so precise there. But, uh, it is literally right at thirty five feet. Um. And what we did was just slightly change the roof pitches to get the whole thing exactly where it needs to be, the balance between the two sides. Um, the original drawing that, uh, Lane Jones, the original architect. We had to translate sort of his drawings into our drawings, so it's. A little bit of a different process, but. We got it all, uh, together and, and I think we have everything here that should show. Should show and answer all questions, including the steel. Structure and, uh. It's X bracing and we have further plans of that, but I guess probably not required. Uh, any questions or good answer?
I'm gonna need copies of all of those new drawings for the file, at the very least.
Okay.
PDFs would be perfect.
Alright, perfect.
Hey, Eric, uh. What do you think about the, uh, information?
If, if these drawings are different from the ones that we received, then that, yeah, that is an issue, um. That's issue one, issue two, um. I think you do have a problem with the height of the building, because it's the average grade and through my calculation of elevation of twenty five. Feet as the first floor and taking out, uh, ten foot. I'm just looking through though.
So this is not the set that you guys received.
No, it is not. We had received the original ones.
Knocking it out of here tonight.
If I take twenty five feet and take ten foot, two and three quarters and then. Do the math, um. And come up with the grade for the elevation of where you've shown the structural. Pilings, you've shown an elevation down, um.
Yeah, not exceeding thirty five feet, is what we're basically.
Well, look, hear me out, so. I think you are, because I've got a couple of concerns with the height, one is the height is to the highest point of the highest roof. So the, you've shown the highest point to the. Mean roof or the major part of the roof, but you haven't shown it to the cupola that you have, which is the highest structure or roof on the building.
Correct, um.
So that's an issue, that's.
That's a good valid point, and.
Forty feet, six inches.
Yep.
And the big thing I have is your third floor with your bathroom and your wet bar sink is a non-starter for. For this home.
These two here are here.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything more than a landing is considered a floor and you'd have a third floor and that, that's just not allowed.
Um, so if we were to remove the bathroom. In this wet bar area, just allow this blue area. To be floor. Just for landing to go out here. I would, I would probably do it, huh?
Anything more than however you.
Is there a requirement on the square footage of the size of it, is, is, I guess, the question?
Usually the landing is the width of the stair going up, um, with. You know. Slightly bigger than that. This is what has been. Viewed as being a non-floor, we've had, uh, town council review. Our question as to what constitute a level.
Yeah, so you just want to make it safe to get to the deck, but nothing extra.
Okay. Alright, we can probably make a revision, maybe we might have to. Have a little more than a straight shot, but we might have to do something, you know. Really get a little bit of a hallway, just to get the center of the door. But, you know, still, if we're talking something that's only. Eight feet by eight feet or something like that, an area to get in. Um, alright, well, that, that's gonna be a revision then.
Right, and then the, you know, the lot size is a good sizes, as noted, the coverage and FAR. Uh, seem to be in, in check in terms of review. I, I do think the height is an issue and that you, it's hard to read the drawings that we received in terms of the height, and I had. Thirty four feet, eleven fifteen sixteenths, uh.
Yep.
You know, if you build it and somebody goofs by a little bit or makes a slight change and it's not correct, then you could have issues with the built structure.
Well, uh, uh, what we'll do is we'll do a, an elevation of the other side and. It, the reason we didn't do it was because it averaged to be less than the existing, if that makes sense. So the lower roof is so much lower than that it's averaged out, we just took the max height. So if you averaged all the roofs. Um, then heights, I guess, could potentially change.
I know, but. Yeah, your interpretation, everyone's interpretation, so the highest roof.
Yeah, what is the, I guess, like, what is the formula, if, if you can help me with that?
It's the mean point to the highest roof, so if you have. Coverings like cupolas, um, and decorative features that poke up, then they become the highest roof. And I believe if you look at your previous application, you measured the twenty five feet to the mean point of the cupola, so the same. Measurement would apply here. It's, the cupola is a nice decorative feature, but in terms of technicality of, of somebody putting features on a building that then greatly increase the height. It is. It is a roof, that's, that's how we viewed it in the past.
Let me just get through it real quick, see. Real technical difficulties with this computer. There we go. So I don't believe it exceeds the height. Of the roof and we made sure of that on purpose. Uh, but, you know, I will make sure and double check that. And it, you know. If we, we went over it at least, and it's not supposed to exceed the height, so. So in the, if that's the case, if we just prove the height on this elevation, do we have to, um. Do another elevation showing the mean height? Or average of the roofs, uh, is my question, I guess.
Not the average of the roofs, it's.
Just the mean height.
The mean height of the highest roof.
Okay. Alright, perfect. We can make that adjustment. Or anything else, I guess we could think, you could think about, I wanna. Definitely want to make sure to get everything in your hands that we need here for this, uh, next time we come in.
You didn't provide us with any floor plan. Or rooms.
Well, I don't know what version was shared, it was, it was supposed to be this one, this is the.
Yeah, we only have the old ones.
Um, so we have a floor plan, if we, if you guys want to view it here quickly, but. Second floor. First floor, and, and obviously we'll have to get all these floor planes to you.
You know, and I, I'd identify the rooms, even what you just showed, they're tired for me to see, because you're flipping around, but.
Yeah.
It's hard to tell what, what room is what.
Okay.
So a little more detail on that would be helpful.
Alright, that's.
Uh, Mister Chairman, um, while we're on the topic of, of revised drawings, um, again, in light of our discussion earlier. Um, would you like to see, uh, a floor plan and an elevation of the existing cottage?
Well, what did, what did we do, Eric?
Yes. Yes, we, I think.
The first one, yeah.
I, I think we need to see the new drawings. The existing condition drawing and the existing elevation of the structure. So that the height change can be documented, the bedrooms can be documented and the new drawings, and I, I would ask that you. Um. You, you need to look hard at the third floor, not make it a third floor, and you look hard at making sure the average grade. Um, the building height. The dimension in feet as measured from the mean level of the established grade at the building to the mean height of the highest roof. That's the definition, um, from section eleven.
And, so would you, you also, as you say, I just want to make sure I get this right, um. That for seventy one.
Yes.
Southern Boulevard, we need an elevation of the existing home?
And a floor plan.
In a floor plan.
And then a detailed floor plan of the new plan.
Are these okay if they're by hand?
As long as they're drawn to scale and as long as they have the dimensions on it, so that. As long as they're drawn to scale and as long as they have the dimensions on it so that.
Okay.
It can be checked. Um, you know, nicely drafted hand drawings are just are just as good. They just need to be to scale and they need to have dimensions on them.
Alright.
Well, Mr. Chairman, in light of the nu- numerous revisions we need to make, in fact, including uh. Uh, potentially some new architectural drawings, we would ask the board's consideration and. Uh, granting us a continuance to allow us to do that and we will be sure that uh. Everything is submitted in a timely fashion and uh accurate.
Good. Uh, do we have a motion to continue to the June meeting?
June seventeenth.
June seventeenth?
Yep.
Okay.
A motion to continue to June seventeenth meeting?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, Eric?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, motion passes. Continue the hearing to June seventeen.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay.
A public hearing. Uh, let's see, public hearing number three. Corey Rice, ninety one Northern Boulevard, the applicant is seeking a special permit finding as the existing structure is nonconforming as to lot coverage. Existing twenty two point five. Owners are seeking to expand the existing second floor story of their home where the proposed expansion will increase the F A R to the structure to thirty percent. And whereas the proposed expansion will increase the height of the structure from twenty one feet. Four inches to twenty eight feet, five inches, a finding from the Z B A is required pursuant to section ninety seven dash. Or D. Five, Part D of the Newbury zoning bylaws.
Okay. The applicants here, I think it's Mr. The Shains again.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I apologize that you have to listen to me um. In three hearings tonight, I I I. Um, I am here this evening representing Lois and Jerry Carrier. They are the owners of. Ninety one Northern Boulevard with us this evening, Corey Rice, the applicant and. And developer or contractor for the project. Uh, as well as Cody Adamson, the designer of the. Of the project. Um, I wanted to make sure that both Cody and Corey were here so that we could answer any questions you have regarding the plans. Uh, and the. And the proposal. Um, however, um. Louise Carrier would like, uh, with the board's permission to just uh make a quick opening statement before I give the. Uh, technical presentation. That's acceptable.
Go ahead. Carrier.
Hi, good evening. I am Lois Carries. My husband Jerry. We have, we are not new to the island. My husband's family's had a house on Forty Fifth Street for over sixty years. So. We have been coming to the island over the years, every summer. Uh, we actually celebrated our honeymoon and expect to be up there for our thirty fifth anniversary next month. So we are very familiar with the island. The problem became the family kind of outgrew the cottage on Forty Fifth Street. Um, Jerry is one of four siblings. It's shared among all of them. So when ninety one northern came available a few years ago, we knew that the island was where we wanted to be forever. Um, our plan is to renovate the house to accommodate not only summer vacations right now, but to be our retirement home. That is where we are looking to be. Full time in the years to come. And now with working home from the pandemic, we're realizing retirement might come sooner than later. So we really wanted to start making the plans so that the house can accommodate us. Currently, there are two bedrooms upstairs. One of them barely fits a single bed. Um, we have two daughters that have families of their own that live in Pennsylvania. We want to be able to have them come and be with us at the vacation house. Um, it's just our intention to use this for our family use. It is going to be our retirement home in hopefully a few years. And that's kind of what brought us in front of you today. So we thank you for your time and your efforts in considering the application. And with that, I will turn it back over to Doug and if you have any questions for us, we are here.
Thank you, Louise. Um, as was stated, uh, the carriers. Are are seeking to put a second story addition to the home. Um, and while not increasing the number of bedrooms, they are quite frankly looking to increase the size. Of those upper bedrooms because, uh, as she said, one of them is 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 barely able to fit a single bed, so. The current lot is nonconforming as to size. It is a smaller lot at fifty four hundred square feet, which, um, you know, pushes the far calculation. Uh, the lot coverage is currently at twenty two percent. Uh, and also the existing structure is nonconforming as to the front yard setback. There is a front. Porch on the home, uh, which is uh nonconforming, preexisting nonconforming. As I said, they are proposing to add in addition only to the second floor. Uh, it will sit entirely on the existing footprint, so we will not be expanding. Uh, the lot coverage in any manner. Um, but rather just going straight up. In in adding to the second floor. In accordance with the building inspector's determination, because the addition will reside in an increase of the far. Uh, to thirty percent and because we are increasing the height. Of a preexisting nonperforming structure, uh, we are required to appear before the board for a special permit. Uh, fan. Uh, finding. Uh, again, the addition is proposed to sit entirely over the existing footprint. Uh, and not impact lot coverage. Um. My clients have met extensively and discussed this proposal with all of their neighbors. Uh, they they happen to be friendly, uh, and and know most of their neighbors, so it was uh. Easy for them to meet with them and and propose their plans. Because it, as we all know, especially where we're seeking an increase of a of the far. Um, the board is required to determine whether that increase will have a detrimental impact. On the abutters and uh, and so we felt it was critical that um, we hear from the abutters. To see what they uh feel. Uh, the impacts of this proposal will be. Um, I did submit. Uh, with the application, some uh, six or seven letters uh from abutting. Neighbors who are all uh in support of the project. Uh, in fact, all of the direct abutting neighbors on each side of the home. Are um supportive of the project and there are letters uh in the file or in the application to. To prove that. I I think it's most important to note that with the. Preexisting nonconforming front setback. Of the of the porch and where we are proposing to go straight up with the. With the uh, with the addition, which would put a an additional porch over the front porch. Um, that would probably have, if any, uh, it would impact the neighbor directly across the street. And yet, uh, that neighbor is um. Uh, fully supportive of what we're doing. Um, all of the neighbors do appreciate the fact that the carriers have um. Have been trying to make this home as nice as possible and with this final project will uh. Uh, complete it. Providing for a dramatic improvement of the aesthetics of the building, uh, and therefore. Uh, benefit the neighborhood as a whole. And as they said. Um, this will be their retirement home. So they wanted to make sure that what they did was in fact, um, acceptable to and beneficial. Uh, to the neighbors. Mister Adamson is here this evening. And. To go over or to answer any questions you might have on the design. Uh, I did try, I do, I did download the site plan. I don't know if Mario or Kathy have it. Um, certainly, I'm sure you'd be more proficient at putting that up, but. Um, I can try if we don't have it queued up. Well, thank you, Kevin.
Hold on, let me share screen. Rotate. There we go. Yep.
All right. So as you can see, we have provided. Um, the elevations of the proposed structure. And there are floor plans here identifying the uh. The rooms and their sizes. I I guess the most notable uh change is to the front elevation. As I said. Uh, we are putting a second uh porch. Over the existing first porch. It's actually the upper right hand. Uh, elevation. Well, you can see it from the side as well, but. That upper right hand picture, the front elevation, there we go. Um, that is, that's reflective of the second. Uh, porch that will sit directly above the existing porch and I will remind you that that. Porch is the um. The existing nonconformity as to front yard setback. We are not exaggerating or. Or increasing that nonconformity, but rather we're just carrying the. The front porch uh to the same distance as it currently exists. But we are in fact increasing the height of the structure and with the additional. With the addition to the second floor, we are increasing the uh F A R. Uh, to thirty percent. Again, it, I don't think that's reflective of the fact that this is an overly large. Uh, structure, but rather the fact that it is a um, you know, a smaller lot. Um, and therefore it drives that far number uh quickly. Um, I will remind the board that we do meet setbacks with respect to the sides and the rear of the structure. Uh, and so we are not impinging uh on those setbacks or moving anything closer to the. To the neighbors, to the sides and to the back. And as I previously mentioned, we have. Worked with our neighbor to the front, across the street. To um. You know, to to gain their um support of the project. So with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I I'm happy to uh. You know, we're happy to answer any questions. I I certainly hope that we provided. Significant detail on the uh, these floor plans so that the. You know, so that we can be comfortable with our far and uh lot coverage calculations.
Okay, Eric. What about the uh, the plans? Do they? Add up?
Um, as presented, I have a few comments. Obviously, the F A R is ten percent over. The P I O D allowable number, which gives concern for the size. I know it's a smaller lot. Um, I mean, the floor plans make sense in terms of the number of bedrooms and living area, but it's a. Small lot and the percentages are there in order to control size of. Building to lot. Um, the double decks then add. A lot of bulk to the building in terms of size and for two decks to be. Basically on the sidewalk, street. Seem to increase the overall volume on our already small lot. And I would say that um, some. Some thought should be given to building two decks on the sidewalk where you have power lines that can be reached or touched from the deck that you're you're building. Certainly doesn't seem conducive to the island. Uh, the existing plans in terms of showing. Bedrooms. I don't know if I missed that or. We have elevations that show the height, but we don't have the the floor plans of the existing.
Hold on, I've got additionals.
Is there a basement in this existing structure? It's a question.
Cody.
I sorry, I can take this, Doug, if you want me to.
Yes, please.
Uh, there is, there is a basement accessible through um, the outside of the house unfinished. Uh, where the laundry currently is.
Okay, so it's only accessible from the exterior?
Correct.
Um, and is there an explanation for Carrier being the owner? The Shane's representing and Rice being on the application?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Rice is the contractor uh for the carriers. He's the one that originally um engaged me to um. To seek the permits. Um, and then um, in doing so, I did get a signature of the carriers as the property owners.
I think I do have that document. That's part of the application.
So if if Rice is, is Rice the developer or are they the just the builder and contractor?
Contractor. He he's being contracted by the carriers, the the property owners to build the structure and. I I guess initially, and Lois, you can verify this. Initially, um, Mr. Rice was going to seek the application or yeah, seek the the permit. Uh, and then decided to engage counsel to help him with that, so.
That is absolutely correct. You know, we knew that there were a lot of rules to. Doing any kind of renovation on the island, so we just thought it prudent to um, Corey had done the first floor deck for us, but. He was not as familiar with all of the intricacies of the island as Doug was, so that is why Doug became involved.
Yes, thank you. That's quite clear. Appreciate the explanation. Um, and the site plan is. It's it's a site plan. It shows the existing condition and it, the deck on the side. I'm not sure if that's um, that the site plan is represented because the. The site plan doesn't seem to represent the plans and that the side yard dimension of nineteen feet five is to the face of the house and not to the side of the side deck. That is there. So it seems like there would be. The deck is nine point five feet and you have ten feet and the. Property seems to slope back in a little bit of a diagonal. So it asks for that dimension to be updated or shown or clarified.
Eric, I'm sorry, um, can we, Kathy, can we? Can we scan over to the?
App, yeah, go to the last page of the application has the site plan.
Right. And so, Eric, we're talking about this deck to the right hand side, which is essentially a a landing off of which the two stairways go.
Right, so you have a dimension of of nineteen five to the face of the building, but it should be to the face of the built deck on the back.
On the side, yeah.
If you could zoom in just a little bit more, Kathy, please. So that nineteen five should be to the face of the deck, just just above it.
Okay.
And then. On the lower left hand corner, there's a diagonal dimension of twenty one feet, which. I guess helps locate the plan, but is again, the dimension is to the face of the house and not to the actual built deck. And understanding the existing conditions, is this? Is the attempt to rebuild the house? The with the front porch of some kind of salvaged existing condition there?
Uh, yes, my understanding and Corey, you can certainly verify this, but my understanding is that we are essentially just going. Straight up from that existing deck and straight up from the. Uh, existing footprint first floor. So we're salvaging the first floor. And adding the second.
This is Corey here. This is uh Corey here. Yeah, exactly. So the first floor footprint of the existing first floor deck would just be mirrored for the second floor right on top of it.
Right, but in looking at the existing conditions, the deck is on these tiny little posts and you're going to totally rebuild the deck. And so my question or point B is why isn't? Why, could you move the deck to the back of the house where you have this the setback? And the space in which to do it. And not crowd or oh, add overly more massing to the street.
Um, original thought was to kind of, because on the, if you see on the plan on the um, real rear elevation, there's a a small kind of inset. Um, smaller back deck. Um, and when we built the first floor deck, um, the original plan was to. Uh, give a deck with a little bit more height to be able to see the water on the front of the house. And then keep the smaller footprint one on the rear of the houses kind of that was.
So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mario?
Uh, yeah, the only thing I was concerned, I think Eric mentioned it, was the increase in the far ratio uh above the uh. You know, the twenty five percent.
Right. Right. I think we all are aware of that. Also, in the, it's a small thing, but in the way out of the rooms, you can see that obviously you've got two bedrooms. The den in the, if I'm looking at the plan, right, the den and the dining room. I know it's not your intent for a bedroom, but maybe the openings to those could be larger than a three foot door. So there would be no perception that they would be bedrooms. We've asked for that in the past. They do look like normal doorways to me.
Yeah, that's something that's that's totally acceptable. We can make a change where it's a cased opening, a little bit larger than, say, a typical door, just to make sure that the rooms will stay as kind of noted.
Right, right. It's a small thing, but it's important. Would would the the clients or the applicants where the FAR is quite a bit, increasing quite a bit with the these porches are covered porches in the front or are they decks?
They're decks. The second floor is not covered.
Okay.
The first floor is covered right now.
So that's part of your FAR, correct? That was included?
We don't feel comfortable speaking to that. That would have to be Corey or Doug or Cody to speak to.
Well, the existing, the existing cover over the front deck. That is going to be replaced, as I understand it, with the essentially the floor of the the upper story deck. So is that, is that still considered? Would that first floor deck still be considered part of the FAR in that event?
Well, if if the floor is open above. If it's, if it's a closed floor, it's a roof. If it's an open four, then it's considered a deck and it wouldn't, wouldn't it wouldn't be considered FAR on the first floor if you open the floor to the second one.
Okay, so we are including it in the FAR calculations. So that would actually allow us to lower the FAR. It would be.
So you understand what I'm asking, that the the second floor deck will be open before.
Yes.
So that rain and.
Yes.
Water will go through. So, you know, that that's something that would help a little bit on your FAR.
Actually, it would probably help considerable amount, Mr. Chairman, given that, you know, as I said, you know, we're, I believe we were adding about six or seven hundred feet of structure. And that alone was increasing our FAR, as you said, you know, to ten percent, by that tent, by that significant amount. I mean, that deck, if that, if I'm correct in seeing that that deck is nearly the full width of the house and then Corey, how wide is that deck or how deep is that deck? Just trying to figure out the quick square footage of that deck.
Well, according to your application, covered decks, porches and sunrooms is three hundred and thirty six square feet.
Right, so.
Calculated that. I'd like to know.
Yeah, so the proposed covered decks is two hundred and sixty two square feet are the existing. And that includes a small covering on the rear deck, which is going to remain. So it would be roughly two hundred and fifty eight to two hundred and fifty six square feet we could remove from proposed FAR.
Okay, so a quick calculation on that, gentlemen, is two fifty six divided by fifty four hundred. That's almost a five percent reduction down. So we bring our FAR down to somewhere in the vicinity of twenty five percent. Essentially cutting, nearly cutting in half the proposed FAR increase.
Eric, are those numbers making sense to you? And you agree with what I, what I proposed or asked?
I do understand exactly what you said and understand that the rough calculation that was made. I do still contend that the size of the structure for the lot and the position of those decks on the street is unless somehow can be proven, does not seem to be in keeping with the neighborhood. Taking the house adjacent to just the north, they've kept their deck on the first floor, but they've stepped their upper floor back. And I, you know, if the application could be presented as in terms of positive measures, adding and subtracting in order to have something that is equal, maybe still nonconforming, but but a betterment would be the best situation, some, an application that is nonconforming and asks for more is a betterment, understanding that the rooms and the layout and the ask isn't isn't seemingly uncommon. But, you know, for the size of the lot, the structure should be in proportion to meeting the P I O D and should be a betterment to the neighborhood for the allowances that are afforded the property per the property size. So I.
Well, Mr. Spahn, I do appreciate that, your comments, and certainly take them to heart. And again, as we've discussed, if we're able to reduce the, if we're able to meet the requirements such that the second deck would not constitute a cover over the first deck and therefore we wouldn't have to count that to our FAR. That will make a dramatic increase in the, you know, in the reduction to that FAR that we're asking for. And again, I do know that the intent, purpose of intent of the bylaw is to make sure that, you know, we're not doing anything that would be detrimental to our neighbors and in light of the fact that that second deck is open and it does face the street. And most importantly, and I know we haven't had an opportunity to hear from them yet or and I don't know if the board has had an opportunity to review the letters, but, you know, the neighbors, the very people that we're trying to protect with our limitations or with the FAR limitations are very much in support of this because they feel it will have an overall positive impact to the neighborhood in terms of aesthetics and and just the the look of the house. So I, while I do appreciate that our intention is to protect the butters, you know, in this particular instance, we have a situation where the butters are are in favor of this in light of the requested increase in FAR. And I do believe some of them may be here this evening.
Okay. If you haven't, Mario, do you have any thing to add to this before we go to public comment?
You know, my only concern was just the present, the, you know, just the increase in in the FAR. Does it set a precedence for other homes and other people to say, hey, we did this here on this one? So why can't we do it on mine? So I think that's the only concern is setting precedence.
Eric, are you fine with taking public comment at this point?
Sure.
Okay, Kathy, do we have any raised hands?
I don't see any hands yet. Oh, well, Denise Maloney was first. Denise, go ahead and unmute. Karen, you'll be next. Unmute yourself, Denise. There you go.
My name is Denise Maloney. I'm at three thirty Second Street, which sits right behind where Lois and Jerry's house will be. And I have absolutely no problem. I think it will be a great addition to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
Karen Bolton is next.
Thank you. I'm Karen Bolton and I live at eighty eight Northern Boulevard, which is across the street from where the carriers are. And and I know because I spoke with all the other neighbors too. No one, everyone is delighted with what they've done so far with the property in terms of, you know, fixing it up aesthetically. It looks much better. And the plans don't seem to me to have any detrimental effect. And in fact, I think that it would have an overall positive effect on the neighborhood and I fully support this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Kathy?
Karen, you can put your hand down. Nobody else.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, 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 I can appreciate the question about precedence. And I guess the answer to that is that no, no decision this board ever sets legal precedent because each and every situation is different. And I would suggest that in the event someone down the road was looking for an increase in the FAR that, you know, the board would not by precedent be required to approve it unless, of course, those people or, you know, that applicant were, was able to show that the the proposed increase would not have a detrimental effect. And I'm sorry to keep coming back to it, but I think there is no better evidence of of an impact on a neighborhood than the opinion of the neighbors that it will impact. And again, if if the board found itself in a unique situation where there was a request for an increase in FAR, while they wouldn't have to approve it because of a precedent set on this case, you know, there is also the possibility that if you had every neighbor abutting the property supporting it, that the board could make a similar determination if they were to approve this. But again, in my understanding of the law, there is no legal precedent set because each and every application has very unique circumstances. I mean, quite frankly, it is rare for me to find a situation where we are potentially requesting to increase a nonconformity or create a nonconformity and still have near unanimous support of the neighbors. As we've all seen, we've had situations where people weren't looking for increases and yet neighbors were opposed. So I just feel we have a very unique situation here that would allow the board to find that the requested increase is is not detrimental to the neighbors because the neighbors have pretty much unanimously determined that it is not impactful to them. And again, I would point out to the other letters that we provided in support where unfortunately those neighbors were unable to make the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you. So the board members had had nothing information from the applicant and the public. We'll close the meeting and discuss the application. Eric, so you're even though they would reduce the FAR to approximately twenty five percent, your issue is still the second story deck being on the sidewalk, basically.
I think the statement that I would make is that I, I find the double decks to be large in size and their position and location on the lot against the street and against the the existing power and data wires, although that is a subjective comment. I would agree that the and the betterment of opinion is a betterment of opinion and that betterment is usually weighed against the metrics of the P I O D. So I would ask that we understand exactly what the ask, since the coverage in the FAR are the coverage is already over the P I O D eleven at twenty two point five and the FAR, if it's at twenty point oh eight now and goes to twenty five, would be within keeping with the P I O D. So would like to to understand the betterment and the metrics that we apply against all properties. And I do appreciate and understand Mr. Duchesne's statement about precedents and agree. And we have stated something similar to that in the past. That doesn't mean that other people don't look up what was done or point out other properties. And the issue is the site plan just needs to be updated with the back stair and deck to make sure that the side yard setback is is within keeping ten feet. And you asked and requested about a change to show that the den has a larger cased opening to make sure that it's not a door and another becomes another bedroom. So I think if FAR is shown to be within within the P I O D and the site plan shows that the setbacks are not not less than the requirement, then and the den is shown as a cased, a larger cased opening, then I might be inclined to agree that the intent of the project.
Okay, Mario, what's your thoughts?
Well, yeah, I would, I would have to agree with what Eric just said, you know, regarding the FAR and and the setbacks. So I, I think Eric covered my concerns.
Well, I think, I think the setbacks definitely need to be shown and corrected. I think we're if the the deck is a deck and not a covered porch anymore, the FAR does increase some over what, what it's allowed, I guess. But it's not a, not as large an increase. And personally, I take a lot of consideration to the neighbors having no objections. I might feel differently on the small, on the increase if neighbors were opposed, but it doesn't appear to be that that's the case. So.
I'd like to propose, if we could, that we, we have the applicant make the edits and submit so that it's, it's clear what what is actually being asked for. And then we can.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. Mr. Duchesne, would you and the applicant be okay with continuing until June seventeenth and come back exactly with the correct site plan and FAR calculation with the adjustments to the living room and the den?
Mr. Chairman, obviously, if the board is requesting that we do that before you'll consider this and that in doing so, you would consider favorably if we could, in fact, meet those requirements that you just, you just suggested. We would certainly agree to do that and I would appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Okay. We have a motion to continue.
A motion to continue for updated application.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Eric?
Hi.
Mario?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion passes to continue to the June seventeenth meeting.
If, Mr. Chairman, if I may just add one comment that the another one favorable aspect is that the height is well under the thirty-five feet.
Yeah, yeah, I guess we didn't mention that, but it certainly is. Okay, so we'll we'll see you next month.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we'll do everything in our power to make this plan more acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have Mr. Kaplan's plans. I didn't know if he was going to have them or not.
Okay.
Second.
But Eric read the application.
Public hearing number four, Barry Kaplan, five deal, Devoli Way. The applicant is seeking a special permit slash finding as the proposed new dwelling increases the height, the building height due to the fact that the new built, the new dwelling is required to be on pilings and and designed of dwelling.
Okay, so Mr. Kaplan, ready?
I am. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. I appreciate the detail with which you approach all these projects. It's encouraging.
Right. Would you like Kathy to share your plans on the screen or how do you want to proceed?
Yeah, I just, yeah, that would be great, Kathy. I have them available, but I know.
Do you want the proposed plan?
Yeah, let's do the proposed plan, the conditions first, and then we can look at the architectural drawings. So while she's doing that, I'll let you know that my house has a history of potential renovation. When I bought it, there was an architectural design to create a second floor, which would have been added on. I didn't like it, so I hired an architect. We drew a new plan several years later. And when I was ready to institute that, the zoning changed. So it's it's been a bit of an odyssey. I I really love this plan. It will involve taking down the existing house and building a new house. And the benefits that I hope will be enough to satisfy all the requirements are that the FAR is coming down. The lot coverage is coming down, so we're actually building a smaller house than what we have now. And the benefits to us will be obviously raising it up so we avoid water damage. I have had some flooding in our basement. We'll have a much more energy efficient house. Of course, with new construction, we'll have a better rear side back, a better side setback and lower energy use. And I've had several neighbors approach me asking if I wanted them to attend the meeting tonight to express their support, which I appreciated, but didn't think that was something appropriate. But maybe worth mentioning anyway. So, do you have that up Kathy or?
I have the proposed up. Or should?
Yeah, Kathy.
Can you, not yet?
Not yet.
Tisk, tisk. There we go. That better?
Great.
Yep.
Okay.
We can't see the whole plan, but.
Let me reduce a little. There you go.
Okay.
So the existing house currently sits where the typing that says lots fifty-three and fifty-four are right there in the middle. And the new house will be set forward about ten feet. There's a shed that'll be moved to the back, an existing shed. We're not adding any other structures.
So when you say because it doesn't show the existing. When you say.
I can give you the existing plan. This is existing? There you go. Okay.
Great.
There you are.
Okay, so you're just moving ten feet is what you said?
The beginning of the new house will be ten feet west or or toward the bottom of the drawing from the edge of the house. So where you, where you.
You're not building at all on the footprint of the house, current house?
No, nothing at all on that footprint. Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's hard when they're not overlap, but this is easier to see independently. So where we're actually.
Back to proposed.
Yeah, so where we're actually within one percent of compliance of current FAR, but we're coming down from the present FAR. And we're well within lot coverage and decreasing the lot coverage from the existing house. Those seem to be the two biggest concerns that the town might have. It's a large lot, so I'm able to take advantage of that. And I'd love to show you the architectural drawings unless you have questions about this layout right now.
Yeah, I have, well, I'm sure Eric usually has all the questions covered, but on the application, you have no side setback for side B. On the application.
For side B?
Right, side B is blank. I'm not sure which side B is, but.
Side B is towards Devoli Way.
Right, so.
Where previously it was noted is twenty-eight point five. There is a built deck, there is a raised concrete patio, so it's it's like sixteen feet existing now.
Right. And the proposed is nineteen, Eric?
Correct.
So the application needs to be corrected there. You following us, Mr. Kaplan?
Yep, so fill in side B, that's the side on Devoli. Even though it shows it on the plan, that's too bad, we're not in person because we could initial that, but.
We just like all the numbers to match.
Of course. Anything else on this?
Anything else, Eric, with the setbacks?
On the setbacks, no.
No, okay. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Kaplan.
Okay, Kathy, you want to put up the the drawings or I can do that if you want me to? There they are.
First level.
Essentially, we're going from current number of bedrooms that we have is two on the main living level and the basement apartment, which is also a preexisting condition. And we're listed as a two-family on the assessor's card, has two bedrooms also. Essentially going down from four bedrooms to two bedrooms. Just the design of the house suits our living arrangements. And one bedroom is in, is in front of you here, and the other bedroom is part of that studio apartment. So the existing studio apartment that is downstairs now is being reduced in size considerably to just that of a studio. And we're using some of that excess space that gets released to create a little more living space for the main house.
Do you want to see the next floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is an open floor plan. This is the opening into the study. Meets that concern you had earlier about the size of doorways. That's a rather large doorway. It's not meant to be a bedroom. It's a study with windows onto the porch and access to the utility area. This is the view from Devoli. That's the east view, that'd be the north view. That's that's the east view. So up here, you'd be looking back at the basin. Right, that's the north view. There's a kitchen plan in there that was just put in as part of the overall set. Cross section of the house. The elevations.
Okay, that's those.
That's it. So the main stairway going up and down is interior, which eats up some of my living space, but at the same time, I think presents a nicer look from the exterior.
Good. So I'm just a little, little confused going back to the floor plan that we have here. The the proposed first floor plan shows that apartment that you said you were eliminating.
The current apartment is being, in a sense, changed to a studio apartment, not eliminating it. It's it's being reduced in size. So my, so in other words, the current stu- current apartment that we have in the house now is is over a thousand square feet. It's roughly eleven hundred. This is about three hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay.
And that's on the main floor, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the ground floor storage?
Kathy, can you go back one?
I can. Yep. There anything else you'd like to show, Mr. Kaplan?
I have nothing else. I'd just like the board to know that I've had been involved with a builder who's built several houses on the island and an architect from Dubryport work on these. And Millennium Engineering, who's also familiar with town requiring Plum Island requirements. Everybody's given this a good thorough going over and with the idea that we wanted to be conservative with both impact and construction expense, I'm hoping everybody finds this a positive experience to approve for us. And if there's no other questions or objections, I would love to ask you for a motion to approve it with supplying that last setback piece of information.
I just have a question about the apartment. I know you you have had had that. Where where do we know that the house is considered a two, two-family home?
It's it's listed on the assessor's card and has been like that for many years.
Yeah.
I didn't, it would spin there. It was there when I bought the house in two thousand.
I'm I'm sure it is. And I I'm looking at the card and I'm not seeing it, but that doesn't mean it's not there.
On the first card, left-hand side, lower bottom of the page says land section, first seven lines only. Use code one oh four, description two fam.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, Eric, what do you have for questions for?
It's, can you describe how the the services to the house are provided?
That's actually the the next stage. I've asked the builder when we could start doing that. The engineer would be Joe Fix, and we haven't drawn those yet. He's going to draw the steel, the structurals.
So.
So I don't have that yet, but.
Yeah. So it's listed as an apartment and an accessory apartment is not allowed on Plum Island. If this is a two-family, then it's a separate dwelling unit that has separate services that make it not subservient to the primary structure. So in until it can be shown, I think we'd like some more proof about the the understanding of how long the unit has been there through some sort of documentation of of taxes from town records. And we would need to see site plan with all utilities laid out showing that that the apartment is 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 served separately from the home. Because that's the definition and the difference between a two-family and a accessory apartment. So those are two issues. I do not and was not able to verify confirming dimensions on on the drawing. I just didn't, I wasn't able to put a pull it all together. I see that the height is listed at thirty-four ten to the roof, but there's no height to the mean roof. So that needs to be adjusted on the plan. The, did we see existing plans? I don't think so.
Yeah, I have existing plans. The site plan, yes.
Yes, but we don't have an existing floor plan showing the.
No.
And we don't have an existing elevation showing the height so that we can note that the difference between the existing structure and the second structure.
No, I didn't know that was something you were going to be asking for, would have been very easy to provide.
And you intend to keep the existing structure on? You live in the existing structure where the new is built?
Yes.
And then you will obviously tear down
Correct.
Yeah. Condition of the building permit should be such that the C of O should not happen unless the demolition is fully engaged and contracted for and and done.
Yep, that's my understanding.
Yep. So I I think there's some work to be done to prove out the that the actual two-family is is a condition that's been existing and is is lawfully preexisting and that the it should that prove out that that the then more detailed plans are needed to show how this is really a two-family and not an accessory apartment, the definition in the bylaws. And that the existing plans and elevation, building elevation are provided.
All of that's very doable. The only part that's a, could be a little confusing for me is the two-family versus the accessory apartment definition. Is that pretty clearly defined in the bylaws?
If you go to ninety-seven dash eleven, which is page one thirty-two, the definitions for accessory apartment and accessory structure. Accessory apartment is one dwelling unit associated with a single-family dwelling unit, which is subordinate to the principal unit, meaning that it it's both within and uses the same power and and services are the same and they're not separated. And then one and two-family buildings. Residences are on page 138. Two-family, single structure, fixed removable, providing complete independent living facilities for not more than two families. So it really comes down to the question of whether it's an accessory apartment or not in its shape or form.
And the primary differences, whether they have separate electrical service or, uh, water service or those kinds of things, cause I was in the real estate, I was a real estate broker years and years ago for a while and close to a decade and, and we never came across that definition. I realize this is Plum Island. It's got a different definition, but.
That's the bylaw for the whole town.
The whole town, okay.
Yeah. So there's attached accessory apartments and there's detached accessory apartments. And the fact that accessory apartments are just not allowed on Plum Island, period.
So where this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, does that make any difference?
If it's an accessory apartment, it's not allowed. Doesn't matter whether it's conforming or not conforming. And if you're improving the situation and trying to meet the intent of the P I O D, then it would be better not to have it as an improvement. If, um, somehow this is lawfully existing to family, or you call it an apartment, but basically a two-family and it meets the definition of that, then it might be considered such.
Okay, then I have to do that research.
Um, Eric, you have any questions for Mr. Kaplan? Um, oh, I'm sorry, Eric. Mario.
That's okay. I think, uh, I think Eric, once again, covered most of the, uh, information. Uh, Mr. Kaplan, do you know if it has different services or are you just not aware?
Oh, no, I, it, uh, the services are unified, always have been.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you check what Eric gave you in the bylaws, it's very clear distinction between an accessory apartment, which you cannot have, and a two-family, which if you can prove that it's been there illegally, you can have. It's just, uh, you, you have to, uh, give us proof of, uh, what you're going to do.
Understood. So if, my understanding then is if it's not allowed, then basically the change would be removing kitchen. Is that, would that satisfy that definition?
If it looks like a duck and smells like a duck, it probably is. So I, I think having a separate entrance, I mean, if, if you had a bedroom, they would, yeah, you can't quite sort of kind of have it. You know, you have a study and you have a bedroom and you have a storage unit on the lower floor. You know, and for the size of the storage unit, if that, at that lower level, that, you know, that's large enough to be a bedroom, is that something also that we missed in terms of the discussion of the size of the storage room on the lower level? That's allowed. It's 16 by 14.
It's my understanding that can't be a heated space.
If it's not heated, um, and there's notes and, and documentation to, to state that it isn't, that would be needed. But you have to, you have a study in a bedroom and then you have the apartment bedroom. So I think you're within the bedroom count, right? You'd be within three. You're really only looking for two bedrooms?
Essentially, that's what we were creating.
Do you need to see any plans?
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the plans myself. I was, uh, uh, well, I don't know if we need to go over the floor plans, but it, it just, you know, a separate dwelling unit. And if it has a bedroom and a bathroom and it has a counter, then, you know, you may say it doesn't have, it all needs a hot plate to, to become an apartment. And so that, that wouldn't be allowed. If there two units are connected. Yeah, I think they all just stands with proving out what, um, the pre-existing non-conformity is allowed and it wasn't added somehow at some point in time afterwards legally. And so then you have a position in which to stand on it in terms of creating a two-family and then you can beat the definition of the two-family and this chairman said it, you know, it's either allowable or it's not. And, and it's proving out its, its, its condition. And it's showing that it's truly meets the definition of a two-family and not an accessory apartment.
So they have to be a separate entrance.
There is a separate entrance off the deck.
Oh, great. That's great too. Okay. Okay. Mr. Kaplan, do you think you have all the information you need?
I believe I do.
Mr. Chairman, one more question, please.
Go right ahead, Eric.
Check something here. On the application, it says proposed and it says height and it says less than 35 feet. So we need an elevation that shows from the average grade to the mean height of the roof. And that should be stated on, you know, not less than 35 feet, but the actual height should be stated on the application.
Do you need that on the plan as well?
Yeah, on your, on your drawing A5, you have, you know, an, an elevation. You should just be able to add a dimension from the mean height of the roof down.
Okay.
Kathy, do we have any public comment?
Okay, I think it's just us and one other person. I don't see any hands raised. I see two blank screens.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Kaplan, you, uh, you'd like to continue to June 17th, I assume?
Yes, that would be.
That'll give you time to get all your ducks in line.
Will do.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to continue the meeting to June 17?
Motion to continue the meeting to June 17th to.
Second.
All in favor, Eric?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. The meeting is continued to June 17.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Kaplan, uh, any information that you can get to us earlier in the meeting would be much appreciated.
I definitely will. Appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening.
And the letters, those support letters for 91 Northern, I'll, I'll scan those in and send those out to you as well.
Okay. I have copies of them, but.
You do have copies. Okay.
I do.
Well, the other two don't, so I have to re-scan them and put them in. And my apologies. I'm still on that learning curve from back in April.
Yeah, well, eventually you won't have to do paper and scan it.
So looking forward to that.
Can we have a, uh, motion to?
Question?
Go ahead, Eric.
So can, can we think about adopting rule that just says within a week's time, a week's time that any new, that the applicant smits anything new, that the, it's an automatic continuance?
That makes sense.
It makes sense. I, I think that we would, you know, certainly have to vote on, but I think that's certainly something Kathy can make them aware of.
I can do that easily.
Yeah, and we think if it doesn't come in.
A week before the meeting.
That would be a week to us, Kathy, not a week to you. I know you're, oh, I mean, I know you're quick in, you know, turning over things, but, you know, if you have it a week before and I don't get it until four or five days before.
Oh, you'll get it.
Yeah, I know.
If I drop it off at your house, you'll get it.
Right.
But in, in someone who submits multiple revisions, I would also caution them that the board might put the brakes on because if, if, you know, I spend my precious weekends reviewing these applications and then they revise it two or three times, I, I don't have the time.
I have to scan those all by hand onto a stick and upload them for you guys. So it's time for me as well and I hate to waste your time.
Right. So just, I think caution people that if you, and we can, we can go over this and maybe we should do this once a year where we go over the application and just make sure that it has what it has and you have the backing and support, Kathy, just to, to tell them that this, your, your application looks a little weak or if they even hint that, oh, I'll get you the site plan. Say, look, don't bother. I'm not going to submit anything to the board until you give me a complete application.
I did that with Mr. Kaplan, but then he snuck stuff in afterwards.
I, I think we just.
And I'm not gonna let that happen.
Yeah, it's, it's just confusing. And I know we've got a good naming system and I know when we get updates, we throw them in this, I throw them in the same directory and they stack up by date. So I can keep track of them, but it's just if I spend the time to review a drawing and I mark it up and then I get a new one and I have to like transfer or redo it or hunt for the differences.
Yeah, that's not worth it. Absolutely waste of time for you.
Eric, can I suggest that you make a motion that we can vote on so that if anybody ever questions Kathy?
So, Mr. Chairman, we, we make a motion is, or to say that I think that we should, in a meeting, at the end of the meeting, save some time to go over the application to figure out where we could add a sentence to, or, or review the application as itself, so that we might add some language or point outs and language or hideouts. And then we can make a motion to adopt and approve the updated application and then.
Okay, so, so, uh.
You know, Erica, I was just going to say, would it help if someone does send a revised application that now puts them another month away from the meeting? So it gives us more time or you more time to look at things?
You know, we.
I have that problem in conservation right now where I have people, um, coming in far too late in the game.
Right.
And they don't get things in on time. Um, there are some items in conservation that have gone on almost a year, partly because there's no D E P number, partly because they don't get revised plans to you in time. And if they don't get their plans in on time and I find their application is missing items, then I would like to be able to say, if I don't have them by this date, everything, then you're going on, not the next meeting, but the meeting afterwards.
Correct. I, I, I agree.
Because I don't want to stack up zoning the way conservation has become stacked.
Do, do you give them any receipt that they, that you've received their application?
I don't actually have a receipt. I can create a form real quick and show it to you. I have a checklist that shows what they turn in.
Right, in the, and everything is stamped though when you get it.
I stamp it the day I get it.
Right.
If it's on that receipt or list of documents received and, and Kathy clearly shows it to the applicant that says, look, you're giving me this information today on this date. If you submit anything after this date or revise any information in this application, you're, you're forcing yourself to be continued from the meeting you were set for.
That works for me.
Yeah, I like it.
Do you want me to draft something like that for you to look at?
Yeah, I think it only helps you. And if you put it in writing, then there's no ifs, ands or buts and it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
And, you know, and I just think if I, my neighbor was doing this and, and they were polite enough to show me the plans and by the time I got to the meeting, there were new drawings and new drawings and new drawings. You know, the, the public doesn't have a chance to keep up with it.
Well, we didn't have new plans for that other project.
Yep.
And I don't know why I never got them. So, because I would have turned them right around the same day and sent you out emails.
And then I, one more comment is that the two and eight are Old Point Road received planning board approval. And one of our, one of our conditions was that we were going to get a copy of the approved planning board plan so that we may double-check it versus our understanding of what was submitted to us.
Do you want me to get a copy of these, the approved plans and then I'll scan them up and email them?
Yep.
Okay.
Please.
Not a problem.
Eric, I'm all for what you're talking about. Do you think the board needs to make a motion that that is what we're going to do or what, what you're going to do moving forward? You know, because.
After Howie leaves.
Yeah, because, you know, next month is.
Your last day.
So it's really, you know, however you, you and Mario and whoever wants to move forward.
And, and thinking that through, Howie, I would, that's why I was proposing that we collectively put on the agenda, review of the planning board, uh, Z B A application. So if people want to listen in, hell, they can listen in. But we as a board can review the application and the procedures and whoever is the new person and puts us all on the same page. And then when we make a motion to adopt, we're all moving forward together.
All right. So do you want to do that next month or?
I would like to do that next month. Are you, you are sitting next month or not?
I am.
That's his last one.
Right. So it would be helpful to have you, um, and get your opinion for your longstanding volunteerism and your great knowledge that you help us review the application with your point of view.
Kathy, don't take any new applications for next month.
Sorry, I got one.
No, but I, I think we have been helpful when we were all sitting together in terms of being able to amend an, an application and sign it, but we can't do it here. And so the fact of, of making sure applications are correct, we're, we're forcing, or we are forced, it's forced upon everyone to make sure that they resubmit a corrected, you know, application and documents.
Do you want me to reformat that document so it's a little clearer and leaves space between the items in case you want to make little notes?
Uh, if you could send it out in Word, then maybe.
Absolutely.
Mario and I could take a stab at making our own edits separately and that we could then share them for review in the meeting so that we're not discussing these outside the meeting, but we're coming up with our own thoughts and then we can discuss them as a group.
I can do that because I can just, I, I think I can merge the edits into one document and then look at it and track changes.
Yeah. And I could tell you off the bat, the one thing I'd like to see or think through is having an application that just has instructions separate from the three forms that we need to review. So that all the pertinent, you're only looking at pertinent information. I know.
I've never, I've never liked the way that's been set up because I have to flip through.
It's, it's, it's been standard and it's served the test of time, but Howie, you know that, I mean, how many applicants can misread and reinterpret the form?
Especially if they don't have legal representation and even sometimes then it's not correct.
Like they make, they make it up as they go. I mean, they just, it, and yeah, and some of these people are looking at the application for the very first time and they've never filled anything out before. So you can give them a grain of salt in terms of, of how they, they see it. But I think the point is that just trying to make sure that the information on the documents and the information on the application is accurate because it gets filed with the deed. And I think the last thing we want to do to any resident is approve something, but they've made errors on them, on their own and those errors come back to haunt them. And they, they can come back to talk to us about it, but it's really their fault. And, you know, we're not trying to, trying to help the residents here.
Right, right. Okay, so Kathy, you'll put that on the agenda with.
I'll put that on the agenda. I will work on re. I will put that on the agenda. I will work on retooling the applications so that the instructions are on the first few pages, and then underneath will be the FAR and the LOT coverage.
Yep.
And and all those matrices.
Okay, I have one other question. Uh, I was lax tonight in asking for public comment. Hopefully, we didn't have any raised hands in those.
I did not see any. I did not see any.
I'm glad I I thought of that uh by the time we got to the third hearing.
Oops.
I think that's the first time.
I would have told you if there were hands, cuz I look for the hands.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn, gentlemen?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alrighty.
Wait, we had a vote.
Vote, please.
Yes.
Okay, Mario.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes. We're adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good weekend, everyone.
Have a good night. I will be sending the document out to you as soon as I can.
Great.
Janice? Hold on.
You're on mute.
Forrest is here. Janice, you're on mute. Janice Forrest. Janice, you're on mute.
You gotta unmute.
Unmute. There you go.
I was just waving good night.
Oh, okay, good night. Good night, everybody.